I'd like to call out of the Selectmen's meeting September 23, 5:00 p.m. First thing on the agenda, and the only one taping, I believe, is later. And item number one is to be with the superintendent in the streets to discuss the increases of some fees at the transfer station, a change of hours. Franklin was going to be here, but he had an unexpected thing he had to take care of, so he has left what we have as right-hand person here. So he's done two things. He's transfer station price list and schedule with changes. So he has his suggestions of what to go up on white goods, which I'll only address the increases. Refrigerators and freezers are going up by $5. Furniture is going up somewhere in the $5 range also. And the bulk waste, there was only a couple of items that he's added that I don't think were covered, were pool liners and hot tubs. Air conditioners, dehumidifiers, that type of thing are going up between generally $5, unless it's a significant outdoor unit, which is $25. The brush has gone up $5 to $10. Propane tanks generally up $5. And he's added a 100-pound one, a large tank. TVs. He's basically added some items. Addition with the tube TV. The trash bags, he's suggesting go up from $7.50 to $10 for a small pack, and $2, the same $2.50 increase for a large pack. Just as important as that, he's reducing the hours on Wednesday and Thursday. He's closing entirely on Wednesday, and he's reducing the hours. Instead of a 7:00 a.m. open, he's opening at 10:00 a.m. I believe that results in 11.5-hour decrease in hours.
Correct.
So that's what he's doing. He certainly has done his homework about the differences in material disposal cost from 2017 to 2019. They've gone up approximately $34,000. So it's just more and more difficult to get rid of the waste material. So that's what he is suggesting. Lee, do you have any comments?
Well, I mean, we got rid of a freezer a few months back, and I thought it was pretty inexpensive to get rid of it for $15. So I mean, I think, and I know how much it would have cost for someone to actually take it with them. So I think those are okay, but I'm not entirely sure I want to see even like the bags go up as much. And do we have some idea of how many people frequent the transfer station on Wednesdays that we would be closing?
Franklin gave me an estimate. It changes every week, so there's no steady. He said sometimes it's only been three people that have showed up. And his philosophy or his thought process on that is if we're closing it on a Wednesday, most of the people that can do a Wednesday could do a Tuesday or a Monday. It's not like we're closing it on a Saturday, on a day where people might have limited availability. So he said we can reassess, but, you know, we can ask them to do counts, too, to see what impact it's had. But when they've had outages or people being out, it hasn't really made any impact on...
Yeah. And then, you know, my other question is, could we do like a seasonal, you know, be closed on Wednesday, let's say in the wintertime? You know, and maybe not summer months when people are, take a week off from work to clean their yard and dump their brush or, you know. So I actually think, I know we pay down the Cape $6 for just a pickup truck load of brush, and I couldn't believe how much we got rid of for, you know, $6 a load, so. So you... Definitely, though, on the bigger vehicles, I would be okay with those going up because a lot of times those are, you know, people that are hired by other people to dump it.
So you're okay with all the bulky items, but your question is on the town trash bags?
Yep.
And the hours?
The hours, yeah.
I mean, this is all severable. I mean, we can vote individually.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay, propane tanks, you know. I think I would be okay paying that. But, you know, the ones that kind of, like carpeting and padding, I don't know if I want to see those ending up in the woods somewhere, because usually when you have a carpet, you have a padding, too.
Yeah.
So it's like double whammy. So if you're peeling up both, now you're looking at at least $35.
Yeah, but if you're, I mean, if you're the type of person that's going to do that, I don't know that $5 is going to be your threshold to do that.
Yeah, but that's one I can see going hand in hand, you know, if you're replacing your carpet and your padding. So, you know. I mean, again, I don't want to see stuff end up in the woods. I do see that, you know, I think it's still pretty cheap to get rid of a refrigerator or freezer at $20. What about you, John?
Well, we certainly, I think we should ask Franklin those questions. But just as importantly, I certainly would like him to tell us what the two surrounding towns, he may want to expand on it. I get whether they're subsidized more or less than we do, but I certainly would want to know what Free Town and Middleborough does to just understand whether we're in the same ballpark as refrigerators and freezers. That is, if Middleborough and Free Town both are $20?
Yeah.
I'm okay with 20. If the carpet and padding is that, I'm okay with that. So what I'm really missing is two surrounding towns. I understand, he certainly said, well, each town is different. I don't need 351 towns. I only want to know the two surrounding towns.
Sure, and neither of those are...
If he wants to expand it to Rainham or something else, but I'm just interested in Free Town and Middleborough.
And neither of them are enterprise funds for either of those towns.
That's okay. That's okay. I mean, they pay for the rubbish pickup and their taxes. But if they do have broken out when they do refrigerators and freezers, if they're picked up at $50 a pickup in Middleborough, then that, it's a $50 price.
Yeah.
So I don't want to increase it, decrease it, because they have it. I don't mind if Middleborough's saying it's included in the tax rate. But we might as well do the comparison, because I don't know if the carpet and padding is too high or too low. I don't know if the trash bags are too high or too low. We went through them. We clearly did not want to increase them much, because we want to give them incentive to have them, to have them use them. But we did this comparison back in 2015, so I still need that done for this time.
And this all means you have to get a sticker to begin with, correct?
And those are different prices everywhere, too.
Right.
So like Marion is $150 for a sticker, but their prices are pretty similar to this.
Yeah.
So in essence, you are paying a lot more to throw away your goods.
Right, right. So, right, so the, one of the comparisons is obviously the sticker price.
Yeah, we're very low.
But we don't want to go too far out of our realm. Someone from Lakeville most likely won't drive to Marion unless they have a cottage or a house in the area.
Yeah.
So stickers and just the comparison as he's done it, and, but not a gigantic comparison, just...
Yeah, just a couple of towns.
Just a couple of surrounding towns.
And I know he did. I don't know if you can speak to that, because I know he did call and, you know, look at those numbers, but he doesn't have that here.
Well...
I know statewide, for towns that have the same system as we do, subsidize through taxes, pays to throw with the residents by the bags, the similar-sized communities, as far as usage, anywhere from like 1,100 to 1,900 residents. We're right now about 1,500, 1,600. The average for a permit fee is $65.
So that's not bad information, good information rather, but put it down on a piece of paper.
Right.
So that we can do somewhat of a comparison.
Our stickers are 25.
Right.
To use the landfill.
Right. But you do have rubbish pickup, so...
Right, we pay for it.
Right, we won't be doing apples and oranges, except for probably big items.
Yeah, I think, oh, excuse me. The two things that have brought this on are the collapse of the recyclables.
Right.
Back when these prices were set in October, was it coming up five years ago, we weren't getting paid for more stuff in the recycle room. Now we're not getting paid for anything but the tin cans. So that, that money has to come from somewhere.
Right.
And it's one of the reasons why this whole thing is being looked at, is the getting, the start of the bulky waste and furniture. There again, it's been five years since we looked at the prices. And back five years ago, I think it was around $80 a ton.
Right.
The disposal of it. Now we're up to $130.
Right, right. No, I...
The, back when these prices were set originally, the way we came up with those prices, we looked up the average weight of what a 10-by-10 cavity is. And we worked out what the per ton tonnage fee was, and that's how we came up with our prices. We didn't necessarily look at other towns. We did, but we more so looked at what is it after it costs us.
Right, right. No, and I think that's the right way to do it, so we can make sure we cover our costs.
Right.
Certainly carpets and padding have almost become hazardous waste.
Exactly.
And so that it's even in a whole different category per ton.
And actually, back five years ago, this stuff was considered C and D. Now it's considered, there's two categories, there's C and D, which is a cheaper price, and now there's bulky waste, which would comprise of cleanouts and that kind of stuff, which our stuff falls into that, just because it was, it was set up. That is specified as difficult to manage. So it, unfortunately, is more expensive to get rid of.
Right.
C and D?
C and D would be construction and demolition.
Ah, okay.
Right, you see all those railroad trains down in the Middleborough yard?
DTM, as they call it, difficult to manage, because it could have building materials, it could have vacuum cleaners, pottery. Someone has to select that out.
Right. So I would think for the next meeting, Maureen, if we could do just the two surrounding comparisons?
Sure.
And we certainly know that it's somewhat apples and oranges, but if we can pick some of the items that maybe we can back into, and then these items, how much do those towns pay? The number of people that perhaps have averaged in Wednesday. Wednesday is a closed day. Moving the hours by three hours may not make a difference, but if he knows how many people were there between 7:00 and 10:00, that might be a help. And then also the stick comparison.
Okay, I'll let Franklin know.
Unless there's anything else, Lee.
Nope. I think with more information, we'll be able to take care of that.
So let's just table that to them. Agenda item number two, discuss bid we see for modular office building at the Highway Department. Nate, would you be good enough to come up and, do you want this to read?
No.
Or you know the numbers?
I kind of know the numbers. So here we are again. I feel like it's round-up day. We went up the bid again for the modular office space, came in at $205,000. I did start to negotiate with Modular, got them down to $170, but I'm convinced that this building isn't something for us. You know, we took out a lot of scope, reduced the size, reduced the numbers of bathrooms. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we don't accept this bid and we move other, move on with other alternatives. We have a couple other things that we're working on right now, stick build and possibly other modular buildings.
Well, do you think we'll be able to close in on it in the next couple of months, or we'll do another winter in the old building?
Well, if modular, other modular opportunities do present themselves, it's possible that we did something prior to winter. Outside of that, we would be looking at a stick build alternative where we, you know, possibly put a foundation in the ground and then move forward. The problem is, is the warrant article was specific to modular office space. We did speak to council, and council said stick build's not modular, so we'd have to go back to town meeting just for a language change. Perhaps this is a learning, you know, opportunity, you know, moving forward with warrant articles that maybe we're, if we can be a little bit more ambiguous for that, you know, it was a highway office space.
Yep.
I mean, we happened to mention the modular, and we're stuck with it.
Yeah.
We saw it here with this building, I think mostly you remember, we started out looking at, you know, modular before we looked at the roof fix. We looked at a modular building, and it's just not the same. We can customize a stick build building at the Highway Department. Architecturally, it'll be much better. Structurally, it'll be much better, and it'll provide, you know, future buildup, you know, maybe in five or 10 years.
Okay, so we move along with the table. Item number two, maybe we can do like we used to years ago, just table everything.
Or do we want to not vote on this? Like, yeah, completely not do this?
So if I may, we would have to refuse the bid.
Yeah.
So we would have to decline the bid and send the people a lot of modulars, saying the bid was declined.
So certainly, if you need a motion to do that, but it's over the bid anyway, so you can do that anyways, right?
Well, after the negotiation, they came, they did come down after cutting stopouts.
Okay, so we'll make a motion that we refuse the bids and send them a letter to that effect?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nate. Agenda item number three, revisit voting, voting to allocate up to 20 hours of Selectman Serpent Municipal Assistance Hours for Americans with Disability Act Municipal Grant Application. At your meeting on September 9, the board tabled allocating Selectman Serpent Municipal Assistance Hours to review the grant application for the American with Disability Act grant. This is being brought back to the board for approval. If the board is in favor, the motion would be, so what do you...
Yes, it was me that was the holdout, and I worked with Tracy on it, and she got me up to speed, so I'm good. So you want to...
The motion, my motion is to allow the use of Serpent Municipal Assistance Hours for review of the ADA Municipal Grant Application.
Second.
All, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Tracy.
Item number four is off the table, was withdrawn. Number five, request from the zoning board to appoint Jim Gavere as full member. At the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting on September 19, Jim and Don Foster advised that Mr. Gavere, prior board member, had expressed an interest in returning to the board. After a brief discussion, board members all agreed they would welcome this return. Therefore, they request the board of Selectmen to appoint Mr. Gavere to the open position of full member of the zoning board. Thanks to board of Selectmen for their attention to this man. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Gavere to the open position of full member on the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second, but if we can have some conversation.
Sure. We need dates, I think, too, Tracy.
Yes, I have it.
Yeah, okay.
So I do know in the tentative manual that was written, there was something about people for boards that are going to be interviewed, but I thought the board of Selectmen used to interview people in the past. Is that not the case?
I think it depends for what board we've had, if we had an interest. We've had them in for conservation.
Yep.
I don't know what other boards we might have had. We certainly have had them in on occasion. I don't think it's, we've had them in consistently.
Okay.
True that.
Only because, especially with the zoning board, yeah. Because I know we still have two members who both wanted to be full-time members, and then when we had done the appointments, we asked the zoning board to appoint one of them. They didn't appoint one of them, and now we have someone else who used to be. So I just think that, again, I'll reiterate what I had said at the last meeting, I'm not quite sure if the zoning board needs some assistance here, because I wasn't expecting, I don't even know who this person is. I mean, you know, it's telling me that everyone was okay with him coming back, but they would agree to welcome this return.
Right.
But it doesn't really say to welcome this return as the full-time member or, you know, so I...
It is for the full time. I happened to be at the meeting, not because Jim, because the Jim Gavere thing was coming up, but I happened to be at the meeting. He was on the zoning board for a period of time. I couldn't say whether it was one year, two years or more. I saw him at the meetings a lot. He did a good job. They welcomed him back with open arms.
Okay.
And I can speak to the reason why he left. He left because there was a business opportunity that would conflict with his being on the board, so he left, and now that opportunity has passed and gone over, so that's resolved.
Right.
Okay, so going forward, we're going to have, if we approve this, it will be this person as the full-time member, and then the other two people will remain part-time. Is that it?
Yeah, I mean, that's, we've asked them, they've not advanced anyone else to full time. They seem to operate, whether they're one person down, I don't know if they're down one person or not as a full-time member, after Jim Gavere.
No.
No, they're even, they're even, right, right. So this will fill it. The other two people seem to be very competent, and I would hope that they would advance them if there became another opening.
Right, another opening. I just, you know, I also want to be sure we have like a diverse kind of a board, too. So, you know, the whole board shouldn't have the same background, the same viewpoint, the same, you know, but if...
The chairman might like that.
Yeah, the chairman might, but I think the people of Lakeville would rather have some diversity, so, anyways, so I'd like to see the full-time position filled finally. So, you know, we can vote on that.
Did I make that motion?
Yep.
With the dates, what are the dates, Tracy?
July 31, 2021.
Expiration date?
Yes.
And we, you seconded that?
Yep.
And any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number six, request from the town clerk to appoint Dave Morwicke to the board of registers. Received a letter from Dave Morwicke asking to be appointed to fill the vacant position. The town clerk has supplied a memo to the board recommending it, so, and Mr. Morwicke has served the Lakeville Democratic Town Committee as well as the Capital Expansion Committee for several years. We feel that he would be a valuable addition to our board. Thank you for consideration of this. So I'll make a motion that we appoint Dave Morwicke to the board of registers. His term would expire July 31, 2022.
Okay, so I can second, but I just want to get the dates in order.
Sure.
So Yvonne's date would have been July 31, 2019, but he's being appointed for three years, correct?
It's a three-year term.
Yep.
So because Yvonne's expired this year, she wants to just go for the full three year term.
Okay, okay, all right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I guess no further discussion, so aye for both. Number seven, Middleborough Lakeville Herring Fishery Commission has requested the board appoint all in wardens and volunteer observers. Emily Ryan as warden for the term ending September 30, 2022. Alan Frawley, Cynthia Gendron, Sergeant Johnson, Janet Miss Clausland, Louise Drywells, and David Lamo as volunteer observers for terms to expire September 30, 2020. That's my motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion, any further discussion?
Tom, anything?
I'm just going to support the nominations.
Okay.
Same thing. We nominated to the Selectman vote for it's going to be already in Lakeville. Ian, just answer the question. John's one question he asks on the other. The final count, I would have told you just 710.
You need the count.
It's 714,951, plus or minus 40,117.
And that's...
So basically 700,000 herring.
And that compares to last year's...
It's up from last year.
Six and change or something?
Yeah, it's up from a couple of years ago, we had 150,000.
Wow.
And let us do the vote, and then maybe we can ask a quick question. You seconded?
Yep.
All those, and any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. How you doing on the dredging of the weeds, picking the weeds?
There is no dredging. We have to go through the Army Corps of Engineers for any dredging.
What a surprise.
We've done a great job with the permitting process. We've had a lot of support from both towns, conservation commissions. Right now, we're being held up as a red-bellied cedar turtle. But we, again, with the cooperation that we've had with various agencies throughout the region, we sent out a memo looking for a graduate student. We have to, basically it comes down to Division of Fish and Wildlife federally. They don't have a permitting process for taking a turtle out of the water, putting it in a canoe, and putting it back. So through Serpent, we sent out some feelers to everywhere.
Excuse me for laughing.
John, I'm trying not to get upset. It's been a great day.
It's crazy.
So we've sent out some feelers with UMass, with Dr. Hennessy, with Bill Napolitano through Serpent, Dr. Padgett from Bridgewater, any place that we could think of, with Brad Chase from the Pottery and Fisheries, with Missy from, anyway, we finally, Bill Napolitano contacted us. He has a graduate student from Wheaton College in Outback Engineering who did all the work preparing this, was kind enough to give him a desk in their own office, so that she could sit right there and do the project, and any question she had, she could ask Ali's who did the presentation.
Could.
So we're very fortunate in that respect. So the earliest, it looks like we'll get the Echo Harvester in there, would be next year. We're given two weeks, the first two weeks in August, due to the turtles spawning and being up on the ground, and then the little hatchlings coming back, so that's our timeframe.
Okay. You're not going to ask us for another $5,000 this year?
No, not at all, no.
Did you get the statement?
Yes. We haven't...
Those are my quick questions. Go ahead.
Are you, have you seen the, what do we call it? The, oh, camera. It's a brown town in a couple of places. The signature papers there for people who want to see everything dredged, and I asked the couple of merchants that I was at what it was for, and they said, oh, so it can, we can take the weeds out and whatever.
Oh, is this the Lakeville Free Town?
Yeah, it's Free Town one side, Lakeville on the other.
I think that's Long Pond.
He's been floating that around for like five years.
Yeah, I've seen that, you know, I didn't know if they approached you.
Is that coming from the Long Pond Association?
Yeah.
Or someone on Long Pond. I don't know that it's coming from the association.
No. No, I haven't seen it personally.
Okay.
Right.
But as far as that goes, uh, good luck with that.
Out of your department?
Out of my department. Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for doing all that work. Agenda number eight, attaches the official letter from the state announcing the Lakeville has been designated as a municipal vulnerability preparedness community. It was written to Lorraine Carboni, so perhaps she can read that in.
I'd be happy to.
Right ahead.
Shall I read the letter?
Sure.
Congratulations. On behalf of Governor Bacon, Lieutenant Governor Folito, I am excited to notify you that the town of Lakeville has been designated by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, the EEA, as a municipal vulnerability preparedness, MVP, community for its completion of the community resiliency building planning process. This MVP community designation indicates the town's commitment to preparing for climate change. As an MVP community, the town of Lakeville is eligible to apply for MVP action grants as administered by the EEA and may receive increased standing and future state funding opportunities, allowing you to pursue implementation of priority actions. In order to maintain the MVP designation, the town of Lakeville must submit yearly progress reports to the EEA by June 30th. In addition, progress reports must also be submitted with MVP action grant applications. EEA will provide a progress report template to summarize steps taken to build on the MVP planning process. Such steps may include applying for grants such as the MVP action grant that support implementation of resiliency measures, reconvening your core team to make revisions and updates to the MVP report or plan, or discuss progress related to resiliency and MVP, using the outcomes of your workshop to inform other planning efforts, or updating existing documents, example, updating existing local plans, and/or taking additional steps towards implementing your priority actions. I want to commend your community's dedication to climate change resiliency and I look forward to watching as the town of Lakeville continues its efforts to plan and implement priority climate adaptation strategies. Going forward, should you have any questions, please contact Kara Runston of the MVP Program Manager. And again, congratulations and best wishes and I apologize, Secretary Kathleen Theorades. I think I said her name correct.
You did.
All right.
And thank you for reading that. And Kathleen, Secretary Kathleen was here for the triple E threat.
Yep.
And also at the Green Community, which I'll talk about the next one. So that was just an information thing for that. As is agenda number nine, announced the Green Community Grant, attaches the official letters, which I'll, I'll read a little bit of the letter. So the grant is for $223,390 and we're going to put all of that money, plus the administrative support, into a Ponacott High School. So I certainly, before I read the letter, I certainly want to thank the Department of Energy and our Energy Committee, meaning all those that have contributed in the town hall, Lorraine obviously being one of them, or anyone else who's done the work submitting these grants. And certainly want to doubly thank our building commissioner, Nate Darling, who has been the leader on this Green Community for a long time now. So the letter from Department of Energy Resources says, pleased to inform you that Department of Energy Resources Green Community Division has approved an award of $223,390 for the project proposed in the town of Lakeville's Green Community Competitive Grant application. All to the Ponacott High. Variable frequency drives, various drives, weatherization, LED lighting. The division reviewed the Lakeville grant and has determined that these are viable projects that meet the eligibility requirements of our competitive grant program. Please note that due to the competitive nature of this grant, the use of these funds is restricted to the specific approved project list above. And then it goes on with the state people. But anyways, it's a great thing that the green energy grants we've got total almost $800,000, some of which went to the town hall, the fire department, and the majority of it went to Assawomps. It's now on to other schools. And the payback on Assawomps, at this point in time, is $44,000 per year savings. So it's a gigantic savings. And we've done that on a couple of different rounds at, at Assawomps. So we would expect this to even be a equal to or greater savings on a percentage basis. So we keep doing that. We encourage Free Town to become a Green Community so that they can get matching grants as we have done. So it's a big deal for the schools to get these grants and a big deal for the town. So that is just from the information point. Any discussion?
If I can, Mr. Chair, I mentioned with the MVP program as well as the Green Communities, we do have a presence on the town website. So I do encourage our residents to take a look at each of these programs because we'll keep them updated as we make progress in addressing some of these initiatives.
Okay. The notification of free cash, free cash approval was on here somewhere?
It's in other items.
It's in other items, okay.
Yeah, in other items.
So the notice of free cash approval, it's never free. It's money that was, for the most part, unexpended by previous budgets. Other revenues came in at higher. So if you collected more revenue for excise tax, it went into the general fund as the building permits have exceeded it, the ambulance fees exceeded it. So there's quite a few things that added to this. And it's great that we have a million dollars. So when we have our next special town meeting, whenever that might be, we would be allocating this to go somewhere. It could be repairs and maintenance of town buildings that might be town, all town buildings, which would include the fire department, town hall, and any other sub-buildings. We have been putting $310,000 minimum into the OPEB fund and the money would generally come from here and some may go into debt stabilization. So I would like, my opinion is I would like not to spend it on other projects other than repair and maintenance, OPEB, and debt stabilization. So, but that's to be discussed at some other future meeting when we have another town meeting. And that's just for information.
Mr. Chair, I had some old business.
Sure, go right ahead.
We got word that we were still not in receipt of all our FEMA money from the Hurricane Sandy back in '12. So we finished up that paperwork today and it's being submitted and we're expecting a reimbursement of $14,000.
We can send that to Governor Christie out of New Jersey?
Yeah.
Because he probably got his money.
He's not a governor anymore.
Ex-governor. That's, that's good. And certainly, there's a lot of building that's going on in town, so that, but hopefully the free cash or the excesses will, will continue. One other thing we need to do, too, is to schedule further selectmen's meetings. Is this the last scheduled one?
I think so.
This is the last scheduled one.
So can we just pick maybe the next two dates?
No, we have October scheduled.
We have Octobers?
I have it on for the October 7th meeting.
Okay, okay. So usually, give me the meetings that I have to go to, so if you could print me.
Rita always did that. I didn't do that.
Oh, okay.
It's a Maureen thing, though.
It's definitely a Maureen thing.
I kind of like that, too.
Tell me what meetings I have to go to.
I kind of like that. Keeps us honest.
Um, I would say after the 7th, we should probably do the 28th. The 14th is a holiday.
We have scheduled October 7th and October 21st.
21st, I will not be available.
Those are scheduled already, so we'll be scheduling November and December meetings at the next meeting.
What day of the week is the 21st? Is that?
It's Monday.
It's a Monday and I might not be available on that day. It's a traveling day.
We'll see what we get for.
We could bump it back then to the 28th.
We can.
So we have.
October 28?
We'll, we'll talk about the meetings at the next, we definitely have the 7th already scheduled.
Right, we can do that. We'll see what's on the schedule.
Yep, it will be on the agenda.
And Maureen, maybe you could just, what dates? October what?
October 7th and the 21st is what we have scheduled for now.
But Maureen won't be here the 21st.
Or we're saying maybe the 10, 28.
10, 28.
Yes.
I probably wouldn't mind the 28.
Just go into the 28.
Not, let's, let's go into the 28, only because November, the first couple of weeks of November, I would be unavailable. So later, the latest part in October is a good deal.
Yeah, okay.
That does kind of set us up for, we can't meet on the 11th because it's a holiday, so we'd have to do a Tuesday meeting that week and then we could go back to the 25th, which is Thanksgiving.
Are you talking November?
November, yes.
Well, November, we have selectmen's election on the 5th, so we're not gonna.
Right, so we could meet on the 12th and the 25th.
And the 12th would be tight for me, so.
Okay, so we'll, we'll discuss it then.
Yeah, we'll discuss it as we get closer.
I'll do preliminary.
So we're skipping the 21st of October. We're gonna do October 7th and October 28th?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect.
That looks good.
Anything in old business?
2012 wasn't old enough for you. Actually, we do need to talk about special town meeting.
New business.
So do you, have you decided if you would like to schedule the town meeting? The only thing that has changed since the last time we spoke is we did receive the letter from the planning board regarding the marijuana overlay district.
But there was no financial obligations that we needed to have a meeting for.
So it's housekeeping issues just for free cash and, and, and moving?
I'd, I'd wait and see what else comes up, would be my opinion, because if you have one in December, you might need one in April. So it was only housekeeping, none of which needed any kind of moving around or incurring debts or approving anything.
The planning board is holding on a hearing to fix that bylaw that had the typo in it. So they're just holding off to see what we're doing, but it's getting to be a time crunch for them as far as scheduling hearings. So that's why they're asking if we're going to have one or not, so they cannot spend the time and money to hold the hearing and then have to redo it again for a summer.
So it's six months. It has to be held within six months of the meeting.
Of?
The hearing has to be held within six months.
Okay, then they could, they could wait till we schedule one and then hold it a month before.
No, they, they, they have to hold it in October. They have to hold the hearing in October if we're gonna have a November town meeting. So they're starting to experience that time crunch.
But can they hold one, can they have that meeting in November, December, January?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Their question is, are we gonna have a fall town meeting?
Not yet. That I can, maybe a new selectman might want one.
So as long as you have it by February, then it won't interfere in any of their hearings, correctly, if they ended up having the hearing, because the other hearing was last month, right?
Right.
Six months.
If we had one by, if they held it in October, it would be April.
Oh, I know, but they already held a different hearing that we wouldn't want them to redo.
They, they held the hearing for the one that you have in the folder. They will have to redo that if we don't have a town meeting until May or June. That one will have to be redone. They have one in the pipeline that they're ready to hold a hearing on and they don't want to go ahead and hold the hearing if we're not gonna go to June.
As long as we have one by February.
Right.
Either way, they're all covered.
Probably, we'll see what comes up.
Okay. I mean, this free cash stuff can wait. It doesn't have to be.
No, it's sitting.
Yeah.
Collecting interest rather than being spent.
Right.
So it's not a bad thing. No, doesn't have to be allocated. And, but you probably do want to do it before the annual town meeting.
Right, yeah.
That type of thing. But no, it doesn't, none of this has to be allocated unless someone had a project that, that had to be done.
Right. And as long as we get it done by February, if we're gonna have it, we don't interfere with any of the hearings for anyone and don't have to, they don't have to duplicate their efforts.
Right, so let's, let's keep the February in the back of our mind. I don't mind having one that late because hopefully then you can, the next one really would be the town meeting.
Right, like we don't have a special before the.
Right, right. This shouldn't be, I think people do it as a crutch to try to do things that don't need to be done, so we'll see. Any other new or old business? I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.